It's Ben Hargrove, I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
I'm Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
And I go to Seta Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
'Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright. 'Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove, I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
I'm Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
And I go to Seta Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove, I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
I'm Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
And I go to Seta Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove, I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
I'm Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
And I go to Seta Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove, I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
I'm Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
And I go to Seta Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
'Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright. 'Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove, I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
I'm Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
And I go to Seta Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove, I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
I'm Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
And I go to Seta Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
'Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright. 'Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove, I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
I'm Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
I go to Seta Mocha.
And I go to Seta Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
'Cause we struck gold in the shining light and it's all gonna be alright.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Setimocha.
I go to Setimocha.
I go to Setimocha.
And I go to Setimocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Setimocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Setimocha.
I go to Setimocha.
I go to Setimocha.
And I go to Setimocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Setimocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Setimocha.
I go to Setimocha.
I go to Setimocha.
And I go to Setimocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Setimocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Setimocha.
I go to Setimocha.
I go to Setimocha.
And I go to Setimocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Setimocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's been hard growth. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
And I go to Santa Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Adam Vedro, Principal of Santa Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's been hard growth. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
And I go to Santa Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Adam Vedro, Principal of Santa Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's been hard growth. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
And I go to Santa Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Adam Vedro, Principal of Santa Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's been hard growth. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
And I go to Santa Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Adam Vedro, Principal of Santa Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's been hard growth. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
I go to Santa Mocha.
And I go to Santa Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Adam Vedro, Principal of Santa Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
On Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to Seto-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seto-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
On Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to Seto-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seto-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
On Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to Seto-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
On Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to Seto-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
On Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to Seto-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seto-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
On Sebeck, Maine. And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to Seto-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha. And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. I promise it works every time. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. This is the good life. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. This is the good life. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. This is the good life. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. This is the good life. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Salamocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to State of Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seto-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Salamocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to State of Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seto-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Salamocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to State of Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seto-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Salamocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to State of Mocha Middle School.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. And I go to Seto-Mocha. Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
I'm Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seto-Mocha.
I go to Salamocha.
I go to Seto-Mocha.
And I go to State of Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seto-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
And Charleston, Maine.
And Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
And Charleston, Maine.
And Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
And Charleston, Maine.
And Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
And Charleston, Maine.
And Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
And Charleston, Maine.
And Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old, and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
From Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Setimocha.
I go to Salamocha.
I go to Setimocha.
And I go to Setimocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Setimocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cumminsley Marsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old, and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
From Sebeck, Maine.
And I go to Setimocha.
I go to Salamocha.
I go to Setimocha.
And I go to Setimocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Setimocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn. Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, Principal of Setimocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
Hi, my name is Allison Connor. I am 12 years old. I am from Dover-Foxcroft, Maine.
My name is Cummins-Lamarsters.
Lila Smith.
It's Ben Hargrove. I'm 12 years old and I live in Monson, Maine.
Charleston, Maine.
Monson, Maine.
And I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
I go to Seta-Mocha.
And I go to Seta-Mocha Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anna Vedro, principal of Seta-Mocha Schools here in Dover-Foxcroft, Maine. We service the towns of Sebeck, Dover, Monson, and Charleston. And we want to show you what makes our school a great place to teach and learn.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 14, 2020 meeting of the RSCU's Board of Directors. Regular, special, and emergency meetings of the school board are open to the public. Board meetings are held for the purpose of conducting the official business of the school system. The meetings are not public forum meetings as are town meetings, but are meetings that are held for the board to conduct its business and public view. Citizens, employees, and others with a legitimate interest in the board's business are welcome to participate and speak to the board about any item on the agenda by signing in and recording the agenda topic on the sheet provided. Concerns about policy are to be directed to any and all board members, while concerns about school operations and personnel should be directed to the appropriate administrator. We do not seem to have any public comment tonight, if I know of. And adjustments to the agenda, we have added one. We're going to have a motion D. And that motion will be to see if the board will approve the superintendent to sign a letter of intent with UGE concerning the solar panels. Adjustments to the agenda? That's the only one?
Yes.
So when we do our voting, I will have to do a roll call for each person, asking how you vote for each motion that we have tonight. The first motion is to conduct this meeting using a web-based video conferencing tool, which authorize a district to hold remote meetings during a state of emergency declared by the governor due to the outbreak of COVID-19. Can I have a motion?
It's removed.
Seconded. It's been moved by Blake and seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. I'll start with Rob. Yay or nay?
Yay.
Mary?
Yay.
Blake?
Yay.
Rob?
Joel.
Ah, Joel, looking at me saying words. Sorry. Mark?
Yeah.
And I am yay as well.
Yes, sir.
Becky.
Oh, Becky, I'm sorry. Becky? Yay or nay?
Uh, yay.
Okay, and Jamie? Yay or nay?
Yay.
Thank you. Eight, zero. I just need to explain, there's a 30-second delay between the video and what we're doing here, so that's why there was that.
Did you get time to head out? Any bad things I say?
Yes. We have a bleeper. The bleeper section is over here. Any commendations or correspondence?
None.
None. So the next motion in front of you is to approve the minutes of the school board meeting of March 3, 2020. Recommend a dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes as written barring any errors or omissions.
It's removed.
Seconded. It's been moved by Blake, seconded by Mark. Again, I'll start with Rob.
Yay.
Mary?
Yay.
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 Becky?
Uh, yay, sir.
James?
Yay.
And I am yay as well. Eight, zero. Motion D is to approve the minutes of the special school board meeting of March 12, 2020. Recommend a dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes as written barring any errors or omissions.
It's removed.
Seconded. Moved by Blake and seconded by Mark. And I will start again.
Yay.
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 Jamie?
Yay.
Becky?
I'm yay, sir, mate.
What?
Okay, and I as well. Eight, zero. Motion C is to approve the minutes of the emergency school board meeting of March 17, 2020. Recommend a dispense the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes as written barring any errors or omissions.
It's removed.
Seconded. Moved by Blake and it is seconded by Mark.
Yay.
Mary?
Yay.
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 Becky?
What?
Yay.
And I am yay as well. Eight, zero. The next motion is motion D, and this is to approve the superintendent to sign a letter of intent. And this is to approve the superintendent to sign a letter of intent with UGE concerning the solar panels of the school. Could I have a motion?
It's removed. Second.
It's motion, uh, motion by Mark and seconded by Blake. And I'm sure there's some discussion.
Sure, so here's, um, kind of in a nutshell, um, the letter of intent is really... Is it in? No, I'm sorry, just got it. I can get copies before you go. It really is about exclusivity for us to move forward so that they can kind of give us pricing by looking at the roof, figuring out how much a new roof would cost, and then what we would then gain back from the solar energy minus the cost of the roofs. So to be able to, for them to do that work, they just want to know that we're serious about moving forward. And that's the only obligation that we have. So this... Then we will say that we think we want to do it? Yes, that would, once we kind of have numbers and we can kind of look at what that really means for us, then we would make a decision whether we wanted to move forward with solar plant panels on the roof or not.
Just refresh my memory. How many, how many year contract was that?
It's open to us, but we had, um, the last, when we had that informational meeting, they talked about a 20-year that the, um, they would go good, the state would go good on a 20-year, um, contract. But that was kind of the terms of, because I had said 20 years. I wasn't crazy about 20 years, but we were kind of guaranteed that 20 years. What does the state get to do with? Did you say the state? Well, it's not really the, well, it is the state, it's the PUC. Public Utilities Commission. Yeah, I know what it stands for, I'm just wondering. Okay.
Again, this is just kind of saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that we, uh, or we won't go to other companies, do anything else with, with kind of interest in using that.
So who will, so they're going to give us an estimate on what it would cost for the installation of the roof or? No cost for the installation, but the roof. Yeah, so what they would do is they would take the price of the roof and subtract that off what we would get as...
Do we know at this point that we need a roof?
No, we don't, we haven't even had anybody come look at the roof, no.
And that's just on this?
Just on the middle school. The rough estimate for that was about $80,000 for a new roof. Shouldn't we need it?
Yeah, didn't, didn't we find out previously that that was the original?
It is the original roof.
That is the original.
$80,000 sounds cheap.
That's right, sir.
Do you have any other questions? About 150, but...
We're not committing, we're not committing to anything by this call.
No, we're just, we're just...
We're just committing to let them take a look and then we won't shop around.
Right, and we won't use that price.
Is there, uh, is there any limit to that commitment?
A year.
So we, if we just, if we decline in a year's time, we could start talking to somebody else.
Okay? Okay. So they just wanted to be able to hear from the board that we had some sort of commitment to them, at least for one year. Good with that? So the motion in front of you is to approve the superintendent to sign a letter of intent with UGE concerning the solar panels. And it was moved by Mark and seconded by Blake. Are we ready for a vote?
Yay.
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 James?
Yay.
And Becky? Yep, and I am yay as well. You have your approval.
Thank you.
And now we're on to presentations, so I hope Arnold is there. Mr. Shori, are you there?
Yay. Does this make my face look fat?
Never.
So, uh, brief update. Uh, obviously, we're fully engaged with online learning and also, uh, making very good use of the Waymap Road Transportation, uh, service. And I want to say publicly, thank you so much. You folks are doing a great job. You only see my forehead, well, that's the best part, so, um, there we go, how was that?
There you go, I like it.
I would say, the teachers, we are missing our students and I think the students are missing us. So if there's a silver lining of, of this pandemic is that there's a, a new appreciation of both sides for education. And, uh, but we're, we're trying to make the very best of the situation. So online learning i- is going on. There, I would say there's like three tiers of support, uh, directly the teacher to the student. And then if we're not getting engagement, we have counselors calling the students. And if that's not working, um, we have advisors calling the students. So we have at least three tiers of kind of reaching out to students who do not seem to be engaging. And there are some, some students who are, who are not engaging. But it seems like we're running around 80%, depending on the class, but between 80% engagement, uh, with online learning. We're also trying to make sure that we're, we're going to make the best, uh, for the seniors. We, our hearts go out to the seniors, they're, they're going out, uh, missing out on a lot of events and we're going to try to replicate the events as best as possible. Last week, the seniors did...
Don't let it.
Did he shut himself off, maybe?
Sorry about that, yeah. I must've clicked the wrong button. So the seniors went to the superintendent's committee to ask for senior privileges. They were successful. We did a Zoom meeting. We're not sure what the privileges will be. I think we settled on a Butterfield ice cream when we can all come back together. But again, we're trying to, uh, do all the events for the seniors that we can possibly can. And I, I've made the promise, and I know the trustees are on board, that no matter what, we're going to have a graduation. In 197 years, there has always been a graduation, and we're not going to break that streak. So it might be in late June, July, maybe even August, but we will have a graduation. We still have 40 students in the dorm, 26 are seniors. We probably will have a little ceremony for the seniors in the dorm. They're on week five of lockdown, they have been restricted to campus. And we've worked very hard to separate, make sure that they're not exposed to outside vectors. And so far, for five weeks, we have no illness. So we, we just continue to work together. We're starting to plan, uh, for next year. The teachers have two in-service days after the April break, on Monday and Tuesday, the 27th and 28th of April. So they're going to plan to bring the year to a close, try to continue to support our students, and also start planning for next year, which is very difficult. There's a, a big unknown about what next year's going to look like. But we're going to do our very best to be ready, uh, for all types of circumstances, so... But you know, it, it really, crisis, you come together. I can tell you, everybody's cooperating. We greatly appreciate the cooperation with our RSC 68. I don't appreciate RSC 68 superintendent trying to mimic Friday funnies, but, uh, we can, we can live through that. Yeah, she's nowhere near as funny as the head of school, so...
You're talking about looks, right?
That was like, on me. Thank you, Mr. Shori, appreciate that.
Quick question.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Rob Higgins has a question.
What are you going to do with the 20% that are not participating? And how are you guys grading? Is it pass/fail or is it a regular grading?
No, we're, we're going regularly grading. We did not do a third quarter because we wanted a longer time, uh, to kind of pair it out and work out the online learning piece. We're, we're probably not going to cover as much of the curriculum, so we, we slowed that down. And it, yes, it does count. Now, there might be some cases, like small engines and maybe woodworking, that might move to a, a fast fail. But no, we're, we're still going to go on met and unmet standards. And, uh, for the most part, we're able to kind of zero in. Maybe not as a, as finer as, as we would if you, the students were in the classroom. But the teachers can, uh, find a, a, a good range in how the students are performing and meeting the standards. So we, we plan to go with grades.
The other part of his question was about the 20% that aren't participating.
What's that?
The other part of his question was about the 20% that aren't participating. What are you doing? What are you doing with that?
Well, we probably will come up with a plan that, uh, when we start next year, that there'll be a lot of students in academic support, which they can recover unmet standards. That percent is not necessarily much different than if students were in school. But what we'll probably do, what we're talking about, is have a much larger group in, we call it A of, APS, you know, academic support period. And, uh, so we will try to reach out to all 20 where they could, uh, make up the unmet standard.
Did you have any questions? Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Shori, we really appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Okay, okay. Adam, are you up? You there?
I hope you guys can hear me and see me.
Yes.
I don't know, like, boring, I guess? No. So I had to flip computers halfway too, because obviously, technology is a barrier for folks. And, uh, that, I'm going to talk about that in a second and why that might be the case with some of our low numbers of participation that we might have. So obviously, there's a lot of thank yous that need to go out here. We're in the middle of an unprecedented time of remote learning, uh, across the nation and world. So I just wanted to, you know, just like Mr. Shori had said, really say thank you to, um, our food staff, uh, our bus drivers, our transportation department, our, our support staff, our classroom teachers, our administration, you know, and the community as, as a whole, so that really came together, um, to try to support, uh, our students the best way we can during this time. I was thinking about the number of meals that were delivered, um, yesterday in our district, or 5,364 meals. You know, that's 536 students and families that are taking advantage of the resource that we're providing them and making sure that their basic needs are met during this time. And, and that's number one goal for us, is to make sure that our students and families are doing well. This is, like I said, uncharted territory for us, and we just want to make sure that, um, first and foremost, that our students are, are healthy and, and are safe during this time. And then we can start to tackle the learning, uh, and the school aspect of things. So there's a, there's a lot of people have come together and it really shows what kind of a community we have here. And, um, it, it's just humbling to think that I get to work in such a wonderful place. The, the barriers that I had, uh, talked about, when you think about participation with remote learning, and again, our teachers have been amazing at learning all of this new online platform, the new ways to deliver instruction and prioritize the learning for our students, and really, really hammer home, um, you know, what it is that we expect, non-negotiable, of what we expect students to be able to come out of this remote learning with. And, uh, they've done a wonderful job, our coaches, um, and, and administration, meeting with our grade level team, our UA department every week, just making sure that they're doing well, because this has been stressful on them as well, thinking about all of the changes that have been made, um, on a, on a, just a quick switch. You know, we went home on a Friday not knowing this was going to take place and bam, five weeks into remote learning now. So, um, again, hats off to them. They have been, uh, amazing at, at learning everything, you know, starting from scratch in most cases, trying to figure out, how do I get my students to be able to, to learn at home? Because we know that's going to look differently than learning at school. So when you think about participation, um, you know, our elementary folks, uh, again, reaching out, connecting with families, we have over 90% participation right now, number one elementary. When I say participation, I mean constant communication, continuous feedback to our students. And students are connecting with teachers on a daily basis. So if you think about it that way, you know, over 90% of our students are able to at least understand what the learning objectives are on a daily basis and be able to find supports from our teachers in our, in our school in order to meet those expectations. Our middle school is a little bit lower. You know, for the first two weeks, I think, folks thought it was going to be a vacation, our students, and realize now that this is kind of the new normal and, and have to kind of get on board. So, you know, things have improved since the, since the beginning. It, it kind of ebbs and flows on a daily basis, but we've got about 70 to 75% continuously online or checking in with teachers. Now, we think about why that participation is so low. We know that there are barriers out there. One is accessibility, uh, where we didn't have internet access at the homes and/or they didn't have the support at home to help them, um, through this, you know, distance learning format. We're hoping that that will improve with the new WatchMyFi going out, uh, and, and connecting families. So, uh, that hopefully will bring our numbers back up and be able to find ways to connect with them. But regardless, if we're not hearing from folks, just like Mr. Shori was saying, we have multiple tiers, we have multiple ways that we're trying to get in touch with them. Because first and foremost, again, like I said, we want to make sure that they're doing well and they're okay. So if we're not hearing from them after emails and phone calls from both the teacher and the office, then we're sending Officer Overout, uh, as a, as a well child check to make sure that they're doing well. In most cases, that's well received, because they know we care and we want to make sure that they're doing okay. And even if, if folks are a little startled at an officer banging on their door and asking about their child, uh, at least, at least they know that we do care and that we want to make sure that everybody's doing well. So when you think about grading, and that was a conversation that came up in, in, in Mr. Shori's, um, presentation. There's going to be a, a piece of information, I, I did a video for our folks and it's on our website, to kind of talk about how students will be assessed and graded during this time. But every more formal document going out, uh, soon. Wendy could do me a solid and proofread it before she posts it, so I appreciate that, Wendy. But really, it boils down to three areas that we want to focus on. That connection piece, communication, and feedback. So connection is just, again, number one goal, making sure everybody's doing well. Making sure that everybody's able to get online or connect in some way with their teachers. We're, you, you know, we're utilizing many different online platforms in order for teachers and students to interact and engage in these meaningful learning experiences. And communication is the biggest thing. We want to have constant communication. So if we're not hearing from students, we're going to be reaching out and in some cases, we're going to be knocking on their door. Because we want to make sure that they understand the expectations that we have set for them. Feedback is the number one way that we're assessing students at this time. There's no symbol or numerical grade that's going to happen, um, during this third trimester. We have our first two trimesters that we have, our traditional grading system that we've done, um, up to this point. And that, that may or may not be the ultimate final score for them, uh, as far as GPA is concerned, but we don't want this time of remote learning to have a negative impact on their overall status. Because we know there are barriers... Because we know there are barriers or there are factors out there that are outside of their control. So if anything, we just wanna have a way for them to improve, to work hard. And some kids, we have seen right now have flourished in this online format who had struggled in a traditional classroom setting. So that information that we're able to use going forward for those students that maybe we wanna rethink how we approach learning for them and approach teaching for them. So there's some good things coming out, silver lining stuff, you know, good things coming out of this remote learning and this unfortunate situation that we're in, where we're able to build new skills and new ways to deliver instructions to our students. So again, grading, traditionally speaking, it won't look the same in this third trimester as it has in the past. What we're asking folks to do and students to do is to do as much work to the best of their ability as possible on that that has been assigned to them online or if it has been sent home in packet form. We're gonna collect as much evidence as we can during this time. And in that collection of evidence, we're gonna have to categorize to determine students' overall status for this third trimester in these three areas. One is meeting or proficient. You have shown a sufficient understanding or a complete understanding of the concepts and skills covered during remote learning based on the evidence that we collected. So we have a proficient or meeting category. Developing or partially proficient, it means that the student has shown basic understanding of the concepts and skills being covered during the remote learning. And again, this is based on the evidence collected. And then incomplete. Incomplete means that we have not been able to collect enough evidence for some reason during this time of remote learning for us to accurately assess where students are in their learning process. So if a student has been deemed to be incomplete at the end of this and we were concerned about this student prior to this process, then that's when we're gonna be recommending the student for maybe some remedial or extended learning experiences, either over the summer or at least at the beginning of the next school year. For eighth graders going to FA, and I'm hoping that, you know, when we talk with FA about Freshman Academy, those are the types of kiddos that we would recommend for Freshman Academy over the summer as well. So really, just boiling it down to what happened prior to remote learning, you know, before, you know, COVID-19, you know, I think Bob Marley said it on one of his shows, you know, 2020 DTC, before Corona. So, you know, whatever happened before this time, you know, that might be the end result of where students are in their GPA status right now. Although, we may be able to find enough evidence during this time to improve that status. It will not negatively impact it, because again, there are a lot of factors that are out of their control. So that's really where we are in the grading process and how we're approaching this. But again, it's constant communication, connecting with families, and then making sure students understand and clearly understand the expectations that we put out there for them during this time. That's my report. I know I just rambled for about 10 minutes, so.
Well, you answered some really important questions, because parents have been very concerned about grading.
I have a question for you and Tim. Is there a chance that another silver lining to this could be that with all the experience we're getting with online teaching and everything, the snow days could be a thing of the past?
Yes.
Will the state have to prove that or how that works?
The way that it worked last year, I haven't heard a lot about it yet, because I think she's been so immersed in just what's going on with COVID-19. But last year, we would have had to send in a plan prior to September 1st.
I should at least make a schedule.
Yeah.
If this does work out that way, which I would think with the experience they've gained, it should be able to be done.
Yes, yes.
You didn't notice the realtor sign out front?
A sale.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrow. That was very informative.
You're welcome.
On to Adam.
Okay, I don't have any action items, but ready to move on to talking about the budget?
Great.
Okay. We should all have the budget packet and then... So the guiding principles are the two principles that we've talked about. I think this is the second year that we've had two guiding principles. One is that the school board is committed to making transparent, student-centered budget decisions. In other words, we'll make decisions based on what is best for children and that are fiscally responsible. The second principle is that the school board is committed to making budget decisions that reflect the district's mission statement. So the initial work that was done started prior to the holiday break in December. And staff passed in their needs and wishes to both Mrs. Watson and Mr. Goodrow. And they kind of put that all together. And we had our first budget meeting with the board in Jan-, at the end of January and just kind of talked about some of those needs and some of those wants. We received our 279 from the state on January 30th. And it was about 138,000 more than last year, even though we had 1.2% or 11 fewer students from last year to this year, because Atkinson now tuitions 90% of their students to us instead of going through a superintendent agreement. We had meetings with the finance committee then in February and March. And then March was video conferencing potentially, but I think everybody actually came to the meeting. And then during the February meeting, the committee gave the administrative team direction in terms of increase. And we were looking at a 1.3% increase in February. And then with the changing landscape due to COVID-19, we changed erection a little bit in March to what that percent to taxes would look like. So overall, you will see a 0% increase to the taxpayers from last year to this year. Fox Craft Academy has the smallest increase with a little over, almost 8,000 less than last year. Sebeck will have an increase, they'll pay about eight, almost 9,000 more than last year. There are a couple of pieces that impact these numbers, the first is property valuation. So it's possible that in Sebeck, a home sold for, a pretty high expensive home sold, which would then have changed all of the valuations in the other towns. There is a 0.03% increase that is because of PVAC. So our increase to PVAC is about $1,200. This year is about a 2% increase over last year. So that is on top of the RSU 68 budget, it's not part of. So that's why you will see a little bit of an increase. We maintain the balance forward budget of $450,000 again this year. And you will also see, we'll have some reserve money in the budget. $100,000 will go into the education reserve for Fox Craft Academy. And $368,000 will go in for maintenance reserve. The $68,000 is what we're actually planning to use this year. The other $300,000 is what we have left over from last year. And we have gotten advice from our auditors to make sure that we put money that we have left in reserve. So as the capital reserve plan comes forward, the capital improvement plan comes forward, we would have some money then to be able to spend in another year to do some of those upgrades that are recommended. So regular instruction is up about $116,000. That is due to, we have a 3% salary increase this year. And we also have, for Fox Craft Academy, about a 5% increase. And we won't know what that actual number is until January or February, the state sets that rate. Special education is up about $2,000. And the reason that it's only up $2,000 is we had a couple of staff changes from last year to this year. One was a special ed teacher and one was one of our occupational therapists. And so their salaries were a little less than the people that we had in those positions prior.
I assume that's like, I'm supposed to be at like 21?
I'm sorry, yes, it is. So career and technical education, if you remember, two years ago, the state changed how they funded career and technical education. It used to come through the district and then we would pay out to the tech center. Two years ago, they changed that so that the money goes directly to, in our case, it goes directly to Dexter. And that's part of what Kevin Jordan has to kind of oversee with his budget. The first year, they got more than enough money through the state to be able to support career and technical education. Last year, they had a $600,000 reduction from the previous year. So they made a lot of cuts and then they came back to us and said, hey, through the cost sharing, can we come up with $130,000? And our part of that was $18,000. Not knowing what that was going to actually look like, we just put $20,000 in as a placeholder. I talked to Kevin and Pat yesterday. Last year, they needed $130,000. This year, they're gonna need about $186,000, which means that as going through the cost share, our percentage of that is about $28,000. So that, when I present in May, that will change, these numbers will change a little bit. So that will show $28,000.
So do they get their own $270,000?
They do. And they took another hit this year to the, I think, about $400,000 that they had to cut. So they're hoping, I mean, there was a couple of bills in to kind of support the rural part of career and technical education that because they just adjourned, they're just sitting there, those two bills, so.
So there is another thing that they're getting hammered?
Yes. Rural. Because we have fewer numbers to draw from. And it's based on the number of students that you have participating. So yeah, rural, the rural part of the state is really taking a hit.
And then how many of our slots are...
We actually, from last year to this year, we went up, we had, I think we have 32 slots and we had 26 slots filled. So we went from 13%, our cost share, to 15% because we had more kids participating. Other instruction is up just over $7,000. And if you remember, this is co-curricular and athletics. And we negotiated a new formula with them a couple of months ago that takes effect for this year. And so that's what that increases. Student and staff support is up just over $22,000. And that has to do with, I think, the curriculum lines, that you'll see that that is an increase. It's for summer work, which last year, I put into Title II. This year, we put it in the budget because Title II gets approved later. And so we ended up paying for it out of the budget and then had to reimburse the budget from Title II. So we're going to pay for it out of the budget. We have revenue on the other side coming back in for the Prague students that we have. We're anticipating about $16,000 coming back to us for the curriculum that they've been using this year. And so that's going to offset the curriculum work. And also, we have in-service plan for back-to-school with responsive classroom, which we're really hoping is gonna help us with the re-engagement of our students when school starts in the fall. System administration is up $13,000. That is a couple of things, salary, it's software for payroll, and it's also website. And our website, the job that Wendy has done, it's just amazing. There's also, I think, the app charge. I don't know if you've had a chance to download the app, our new app, but Matthew has done an amazing job and we have an app that's been rolled up for some option. School administration is up $8,000. Again, that is salaries. And middle school equipment line. We had some paper cutters that didn't have the proper edges, safety edges on them. And so when we had somebody come and tour the building, we need to get new paper cutters. We need, our laminators gets used a lot and it's pretty tired and so we need a new laminator. So there's a few pieces of equipment that we needed to upgrade. Transportation is up about $11,000 and that is the contract for Rouse and Waymus. And if you remember, we, our three years are up and you as a board agreed to extend those contracts for a fourth year. Facilities and maintenance is up $54,000. So that is the contract for HVAC, the architect's improvement plan. And some minor repairs are in there, such as putting water in the sixth grade science room, shingling the garage, actually, it's a metal roof, not shingling. We did get a new quote.
You did.
We're gonna go with that. Update to the electrical box in the main hallway. I don't know if you remember when we had the flood in the gym that was crazy, trying to figure out where the alarms were and how to shut everything off. And so we have a quote for somebody to come in and clean up that box and label everything so that we know what's in there and how to get out of it. There's also money in this for a heat pump in the kitchen. Katie works all summer long, it is so hot in there. And this heat pump would allow us to put a little cool in there. I don't know if you ever seen her face, but oh my gosh, it's just be red. It's really hot in there. And also, to put some new windows in the kitchen, because those windows do not work. They are not very efficient in the winter. Debt service on the building, we're down from, we're down interest, another $51,000. So that puts our total budget for this year at $11,977,877, which is up 1.58% from last year. So there'll be a few additional warrants that we always have to vote on. One is for PVAC, which is up 2%. So it's $63,964.51. We'll be putting the $100,000 in reserves for educational needs, and $68,500 in capital improvements. And those are the ways that we plan to expend that. And then when you look at what that means to taxes, Charleston goes down about 1%. Dover, Foxcroft goes down about a quarter percent. Monson goes up 1.2%, Sebeck 1.3% for a total increase of 0.03. And that $1,200 is the PVAC increase. So we've tried really hard to put together a budget based on those principles that are good for kids and trying to be fiscally responsible, knowing that this is not gonna be a good year for our towns. And I am honestly trying to be proactive and thoughtful about the fact that I anticipate a curtailment at some point next winter. And trying to be prepared for that. So I just wanna thank... So I just want to thank the finance committee members, Jenny and Blake and Mary and Mark and Tim. And a special thank you to Teresa, who, she came in this morning and she had a new note in her box from me saying, could you make another? So she's great about making those changes and helping me talk through what makes the most sense. And to Wendy, who will now, once, next month, once you approve everything, we'll get all the notices out and the warrants together. I'm anticipating that we will continue with our, I think it's May 30th date for the budget hearing, even though the vote will not be until July, which means we will just continue, July 1st, we will continue with last, this past year's budget.
There is a possibility we won't be able to have that hearing on the 30th still?
Yes, there is a possibility.
It's the 26th.
The 26th, thanks.
That could end up being pushed back?
It is very possible.
Very easily into June if we have July?
Yes. We just have to have-
We have a, there's a timeline though.
We have to have seven days prior.
Seven days? So it's have to be a week before?
Yep.
I think Wendy has to have time to get stuff over to the town?
Yeah, all has to go to all the towns.
Okay.
All of the warrants have to be together and out to the towns. Any questions?
I think you've done a very responsible job here for the towns. It's unfortunate, it seems like Monson and Sebeck get hit every time.
Charleston, do you already have your meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
It did not go, we had Becky win.
Yeah. And the one in Dover got, is pushed back indefinitely. When I, last time I talked to Jack, he wasn't sure when. Yours isn't until August anyways. And Jamie, when is Monson's? Jamie, when is yours in Monson, do you know? Your town meeting?
I'm sorry, it sounds quite murky. When is the town meeting in Monson, is that what you asked?
Yeah.
Everything's on hold for the moment. I reached out to Tyler, one of our selectmen, a couple of weeks ago. He said he will let me know as soon as they establish anything. But right now, everyone's sort of in the same wait-to-be-hold pattern. If there's anything you'd like me to communicate directly with them, let me know. But yeah, nothing's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I do have for you, before the legislators got out of session, they did approve an additional reserve money. You have to have the town, the taxpayers vote on using the reserve money. So that's why it's always a warrant. But they've added a new clause into the law. They've amended it to say that if it's an emergency, then your board can vote and use that money. So heaven forbid, but a boiler goes down in February, we could have an emergency meeting. You could vote in that 300,000 that we just set aside. We would be able to pull that money out and use it as long as this board voted approval for that. So that's-
And that's basically what this is saying?
That's what that says.
And then that response can hold?
Only, yes.
Thanks, Rob.
Yes. Only for that and only in an emergency. And it would have to be a catastrophic kind of emergency where you just couldn't function without having that money to spend to be able to fix whatever it was without taking it out of the wallet. The other information that I have for you is a letter. Dear Mrs. Shurrie, I'm writing this letter to notify you of my formal resignation from the role of seventh grade social studies teacher at Semocha Middle School. Upon completion of the contract for the 2019-2020 school year, I will not be renewing. I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity that RSU 68 has provided me with to grow as a professional as well as an individual. I'm happy to say that I was able to start my teaching career in the district with a nurturing staff and network of support. I will always have fond memories of my time employed by RSU 68. If there's anything that I can do to help support the transition to a new member of the seventh grade team, please let me know. Thank you again. Kind regards, Derek Carroll. And I would say that we wouldn't accept his resignation with regret.
Absolutely. And that's already gone out, can I assume?
It is. We went out, he had told me last week that he thought he'd gone to the superintendent. It was just a matter of when he was going to get his contract. So we put it out as anticipated. And then once I got the letter, I think actually today, Wendy changed it too.
Okay, so we're ready to go into executive session today? Or you, oh, facilities and maintenance?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. So the gym is done. So in between this meeting and executive session, I thought we might take a walk and look at the new gym. I think it looks fabulous. The cafeteria, we can bring you, we'll bring my computer with you, Jamie and Becky, so that you can see it too. I'll bring the computer right with me. The cafeteria will be done during break. The energy efficiency work. We have, I met with Kevin Armstrong last week, the week before last. And we looked at the two, there are two different grant options out there right now. One is the one that I talked about that was up to $100,000. And then there's others that are small amounts. So, and I thought the biggest kickback that we were going to get was going to be on the gym lights. So when you actually put in our gym lights, we got nothing back for them. So we looked at, we got nothing back for the gym lights and nothing back for the cafeteria lights, which were going to be two of our biggest expenses. So we looked at the other program. It's a program that they have in place for schools all along. And we were able to get 10,000 back for that on the gym and the cafeteria lights. And then we were also able to get reimbursement for the lights in the art room. And then we're able to get some reimbursement for classroom lights. And so for the 30,000 that I had put in the budget, we're able to get all of those pieces done this year. And 40,000 total cost, we get 10,000 back. So it cost us 30,000 to do the cafeteria, the gym, the art room, and half of the classrooms in the middle school.
And parking lot too?
Oh, excuse me, yes, and the parking lot lights that are not LED yet. We got a grant through True Value for 20 gallons of paint. So we are looking to paint. We've never had a classroom paint schedule here. It's just been kind of little and nilly. So Jeff and I talked about kind of setting up some sort of a rotation so that we could kind of get that moving forward. I think the last time it was done was like maybe seven years ago and they were allowed to pick from five different colors. We're going to bring that down to maybe three different colors. And so Jeff and I are going to pick out those paint colors and give people, wherever, I think we're going to start with the rooms that are going to be moved and give those people the option of making that selection again.
Have they all been deep cleaned already or will that-
They have all been deep cleaned. And so every time somebody comes in, they sign in the front. And so the custodians, when they come in in the morning, that's what they do. They look at who's been in the day before and they go to those rooms first and clean. The CARE Act fund, haven't really heard a whole lot more about that. Sue listened on a webinar. The money from the federal government. We're going to get money through Title I. And special ed is going to get money through local entitlement. Somewhere around 200,000 for both of us. And so we have about a year to spend it. We have between now and June 30th of next year to spend it. And it's kind of like the "our" money. And so it's kind of open on how you can spend it. So one of the things that I'm kind of thinking about is that we might hold some in reserve in case we do end up with some sort of a curtailment. And then maybe think about a generator. When we were without power, at the end of last week, we had thousands of dollars of food in all of our freezers and refrigerators. And it was a wreck worrying that, because that all has to stay at a certain temperature. I was a wreck that we were going to have to dump all of that food. And so we had, they came. They were able to fix that part of the building, but not the middle school part of the building. So we had power in the elementary. We don't have enough refrigerators because I said, can we move food around? They're not nearly big enough. We don't have enough refrigerators to make that happen. So then we talked about getting a generator, renting a generator for just the kitchen. Kevin Armstrong was great. He came up, he looked it all over, thought we could make that. They found one, they had one left to be able to rent. Call back CMP, they still couldn't really make us any guarantees on when they would be back here. But in the late afternoon, as Jeff was getting ready to go to Bangor and pick up the generator, CMP came. So they were able to fix it. But it was just one of those things like, oh man, that would have been really bad. So something that I would like us to consider using that money for would be to put in a generator. And we put one in big enough that would also help out with some of our classrooms. So if there was a different type of emergency, this could be a shelter. So I was just, I was telling Jenny and Mark that when we had the flood and Chief Guyot was here, he said that there was $50,000 in the budget when the school was built. And that money at the very end got switched over for the playground. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's, that's what, that was his recollection of how that all went down. So that there is some wiring though in the building already for the generator. So that would be good to, that's a good news. Hotspots, we were very lucky to be granted the first deployment of hotspots because our county was the, had the least connectivity of all the counties in the state. And I just have to say, Matthew has done an amazing job. And he's, all those hotspots are ready to go out tomorrow. I mean, he, the remote learning, the work that he's had to do to put that all together and to make sure that the computers were right. I mean, he's just spent hours, hours, hours here getting it all right. And so I just wanted to publicly thank you for everything that you've done. I know sometimes I drive you crazy because I'm a "thank you", but I appreciate everything that you've done. And that goes along with actually the entire administrative team. They've just done a phenomenal job. They've just stepped up, they're leaders. They've just taken things on, made sure thing, our staff has been supported, our students have been supported. You know, as Adam said, when we have concerns and they hear about concerns about students, they get in touch with Tyson and Tyson goes out and does all this. I mean, it's-
It's good to hear.
It's been, yeah, we have a great team. In times of crisis, I think you really kind of see really what people are all about. And I'm really proud to say that we have an amazing team. Not our teachers, our techs, nobody, they're just all pitching in and doing whatever they need to do. That makes me very proud. I think that's it.
Okay, then you want to take a little break? And before we go into executive session, so you can show off your new floor?
Yeah. So do you want to call this meeting?
Yeah. Usually what I say is let's take a 15-minute break?
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, so back here, some of 15?
So, Sue, I'll call you first. We'll add you on first. Then Andrew, I'll get in touch with you and then Adam. Do you want me to invite you through Ally's? Do you want me to invite you through Ally's information or yours?
I know you're talking to me. Sorry. So would you like me to go second?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll meet again in about 10 minutes. And I'll call Sue first.
Sounds good.
Okay.